Bert Shepard.
Yes.
Basim Verdas.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Moving to discussion Franklin to associates appeal of his zoning decision. That's carried to December 16th, 2021. And then an extension of time, I apologize ahead of time if they mispronounced. Aduchunka Gary Cultural and Spiritual Foundation of USA ZBA 1800014.
I'm sorry. This is a discussion item. I think that is.
My speed representation.
Mr. Lanford, I believe, believe he's the attorney on this.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This was an application that was approved some years ago. It has, we have not been able to start construction. Partially due to the pandemic and the inability of our congregants to get together and to raise funds to do this project. We are requesting and it is extended through the end of the year under the permanent extension acts or approvals are still good and valid. To refresh the board's recollection, this was a house of worship on Western Road behind an existing house. We are requesting a two-year extension of the approval so that hopefully we will be in a position within that time to proceed with the project. There has been no changes with the zoning, no changes involving anything else regarding the project.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Or comments? With some.
Two years is a maximum, isn't it? That is correct. And. Okay, all right, that's all.
Any others? Anyone want to offer a motion?
Anyone?
So move.
I'll move with Gary.
Okay, so Cheryl, I'll put you as first and Gary a second. Cheryl Bethia.
Yes.
Richard Trochanic.
Yes.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Robert Shepard.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Okay, now we get down to the hearing we will be having tonight for the continuation. Data Aguan Vignan Institute ZBA 1900040. Condition D3 conditional use variance, C variance in site plan, which the applicant's asking to construct a 21,083 square foot place of worship. The parking lot and five-foot monument sign at 6:30 South Middle Bush Road Somerset Block 37.02. Lot 46.03 in the A-zone. This has last been carried since September 2nd, no further notification necessary. And I see that our, the applicant's attorney has already been present, so I'm assuming we're ready to get started.
Before we get started, Mr. Lanford, I just want to make sure the public is aware that all members who have missed any type of meetings. I have received all audio certifications for all previous meetings, they are on file. So everybody, should this matter come to light this night, this evening to be voted on, everyone is eligible to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Woodbury. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is meeting number 11 in this matter. The first meeting having started in September of 2020. At the last meeting, which was on October 5th, we had concluded all of the testimony of the objectors. And at that time, the board closed the public meeting. We were going to adjourn till tonight, or actually till the next meeting, which would have been September for public comment. And for a vote on the matter. During the discussion at the end of the meeting, certain board members indicated that, you know, because of the passage of time and changes and amendments to the plan as a result of comments of board members and members of the public. They were not comfortable on voting on a site plan because so much has gone on over the last year. I offered to bifurcate the matter so that the board could vote solely on the use variance. And that we would come back for preliminary and final site plan. As a matter of fact, at the beginning of this process, I indicated we were only seeking preliminary site plan. After that hearing, Ms. Bailey objected to the bifurcation of the matter in a letter that she sent to the board. Since we had some time between the last hearing and the, and tonight. Mr. Arndman was able to update the site plan. He submitted it to the township three weeks ago. It's been on record and been on its website since that time. So with the permission of the chairman, I would like to open the meeting back up to present that testimony so that the board can then vote. Not only on the use variance, but also the preliminary site plan.
That's fine, proceed.
Thank you. I would like to call Mr. Arndman as my witness.
Has, of course, already been sworn in.
That's correct.
And qualified.
And you're still licensed, Mr. Arndman?
Yes, I am.
Okay, before I start with Mr. Arndman, I just want to make two other points. Since our last meeting, we did receive a letter from Somerset County. They reviewed the application and they approved it. And as part of that approval, they did not require any left turn lane or road widening for this project. They did require, as we had offered, a dedication along the frontage of South Middle Bush Road. But, but there is no left turn that was required and this project has been approved by Somerset County. The second item that I would like to point out to the board was as we got, went through these hearings. Initially, the color of the building was white. There were recommendations or requests by the neighbors that the building be painted earth tone. We had agreed to paint three sides of the building in earth tone color and preferred for religious reasons to leave the front of the building white. In having discussions with my client, my client indicated if it is important, they would prefer to leave the front of the building white, but if the board wants the building to be beige or an earth tone color on all four sides, they'd be willing to do it. So those two caveats, I would like to now turn the microphone over to Mr. Arndman who, well, Mr. Arndman, you prepared a site plan exhibits to reflect all of the changes that were discussed at these 11 meetings and hopefully have incorporated them in a site plan.
That's correct, Mr. Lanford.
Okay, and when were those submitted, if you recollect?
October 4th, they were submitted.
Okay, and how many sheets were submitted?
There were two plan sheets, the dimension plan sheet four and the landscape plan sheet six. And the last revision date on those is 9/121.
Okay, and those as typical plans were submitted, were submitted in black and white?
That's correct.
Okay, and do you have this evening a colored rendering of the landscape plan? To assist the board in reviewing this matter?
I do. Yeah, we put color on it. There's no other change to the plan except the color rendering of it. And for the, the board and any neighbors, I think that'd be helpful.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have Mr. Arndman bring up the color rendering because I think it'd probably be easier to go through the changes with the color rendering, if that's okay?
Yeah, do these have to be marked and as exhibits?
Yeah, they're all new documents or new plans, so I think the two submissions that were made in early October should be marked and I don't have the exhibit list. I guess we can mark it A1 with today's date. If that's okay, Mr. Reagan?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm trying to take a look myself to see if we have it, but yeah, that's fine. Let's do that.
And, and then the colored rendering of the landscape plan would be A2. Again, with today's date. Mr. Arndman, can you bring up A2, the color rendering?
That is what I'm looking to do. All right, is that sharing for everybody?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, as described, this is the landscape plan sheet six, which has been color rendered. I just orient everybody once again, I know we've seen this many times, South Middle Bush at the top, north is to the right on the plan. On the north and the bottom of the sheet here, the Snyder Farm property abuts the property to the south. Is the Franklin Township Open Space Property. And there are two residential lots along South Middle Bush, lots 4501 and 4502. So the main changes in the plan in my letter dated October 4th addressed Mr. Healy into the zoning board. Detail the changes we made and that we've agreed to in the past. So the first is that the driveway, which if you remember, we were going to use the existing drive along the neighbor on lot 4502. That's been shifted over 300 feet to the north. So that is well removed from their property. And in place of that, as we're taking out that old driveway, we're still planting that even though that'll be done. We're infilling with plantings along that common property line where that driver was removed. The House of Worship, second point, was moved forward on the property away from the Snyder property at the rear. It's now 130 feet from that rear line and it's also been shifted to 75 feet from this white and north property line. So there is no longer a side yard variance in that location. With the shift of the House of Worship, the parking obviously moved forward as well, but it still works well on the property in conjunction with the entrance drive, which comes right into the driveway. And as requested and we show here, the access to the house would be off of the new parking lot area. It was concern for the neighbors, understandably, lots 4501 and 4502. We've made sure that the parking lot is a minimum of 110 feet from their property line. We have also banked those parking spaces that directly face that neighbor. So when this goes to construction, if that basically gives another 18 feet of non-pavement in that location, and that would eliminate the headlights of those cars in that location from pointing to that neighbor's under the bank parking scenario. What also was added in that location is a full hedge row along those parking spaces. That will be installed with or without those parking spaces, so those will go in up front. Provide another layer of buffer. I described in prior testimony, the buffering that we are doing, there's significant wooded area behind those neighbors, even behind their houses are fully wooded, not fully wooded, but largely wooded to the property line. We are still infilling that woods area as we had done on the prior plan. At the back of the House of Worship as agreed to, there is a 10-foot-high planted berm. And on top of that, we've added a double row of evergreen trees. To shield the House of Worship from the neighboring property, which we, as you refer testimony, the house itself is some distance, but we still are providing that buffer. Along the northern edge, making sure we have noted to save the existing trees in that area, which we are doing. And then we're infilling with additional evergreen trees along that northern property line between the House of Worship and that property line. Along that property line as well as, as requested by the neighbor, there will basically be a deer-style fence. It was concern about anybody wandering off the property. So from the edge of the wood wetlands in the southern corner, going along the property line and back up along the common side yard line. It will be that deer fence, that six-foot-high fence as discussed. The last item, just as a big picture, let me load this up a little bit here. Let's see a little bit more. There was much discussion about plantings on the property. As we described, there's tree removal and whatever we cannot plant on site, we will be contributing to the tree fund. Several comments from board members about getting more trees on this property, which we have done. So I described the plantings along the common property lines in the rear that we've done. We've also planted along this northern common property line with the farm, basically what will be a large hedge row. And that's going to serve two purposes, three actually. First, as I was saying, to get more of the required tree replacement on the property. Secondly, to buffer the farm from the activity. And third, there was concern about potential view shed coming from South Middle Bush. Now, I had previously shown pictures and described how this line here is the edge of Lewis Line. And you can see all those circles that are in here in the kind of lighter shade, those are all existing trees and those were shown on photographs I presented. So it provides a pretty solid buffer and screen in that location. But in any event, for potential view shed to the House of Worship along South Middle Bush, this other row will act as a block for that view, while at the same time, the idea of open space and seeing the open space from the road, as you look in, you'll still see the farm field. And this, as you see in many designations between different farm fields where hedge roads were left. That, that'll fall kind of into that same theme as, it won't look out of place in our opinion. And then obviously along the driveway coming in, we've added street trees along that driveway. That will be a nice ally of trees as you come into the site. So I think in general, those are the points that the, we agreed to with the board. You had seen in rough sketch version, but now you see it in dimension plan and landscape plan design. So I think that meets, you know, the concerns of the board and what we had agreed to in our testimony.
And Mr. Arndman, if we make all of these changes, they do not affect the storm water management plan that was originally submitted in conjunction with this application or reviewed by township staff?
That's correct. The basin is in the same location, this basically the southern corner of the property. All the drainage will still come as it did before to that basin. As far as impervious coverage, it's basically the same. There was a little swap. The driveway is a little bit longer coming in, but since we pushed everything forward, it shortened this leg of that same driveway. So it was really a balance on that. So same detention basin, no change, no impact to the neighbors as we're handling our storm water management.
And at the last meeting, some of the board members had expressed a concern that they would like to minimize the view of the House of Worship if from South Middle Bush Road, as somebody was traveling south on South Middle Bush Road. In your opinion, with the new hedge row of trees, plus the trees along the driveway, plus the retention of all of the trees that are currently there. In your opinion, would the House of Worship itself really be visible from a motor, by a motors traveling down that roadway?
No, I believe not. And as you go down there now, obviously there's a house on the property, it's smaller scale. But you, you can't even see a peep of it. Again, I do not think you'll be able to see this. It's set back in the far corner of the property with the woods that we've described and the additional plantings, I think it'll be well screened.
Thank you, Mr. Arndman. I have no further questions.
Okay, are there any questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify just a few numbers.
It's hard to hear you more.
If I could clarify just a few numbers with Mr. Arndman. Starvin, with the new plan, what would be the total number of parking spaces, including the banked spaces? Does that change?
That number did not change.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the building setback, the initially there was a setback, I think you said one of the setback variances goes away, was that the side setback?
The side setback goes away. We're now at 75 feet.
Okay, so that, and that's the requirement, so that variance goes away. And the rear is now what?
It was 50 feet, now it's 130 feet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if these are questions for Mr., I guess it is. Mr. Arndman, did you see the memo from Mark Healy dated August 10th, 2021?
I'm, I'm not sure that I did, to be honest with you.
Well, that's depressing.
Yeah.
If somebody, well, nobody can give a copy because we're virtual. Okay. That's too bad, because I was going to ask you if what you did complied with all of the points that Mark Healy made about concessions that your client had made.
Yes, well, let, let me just, so we put that concession letter together at that time between Mr. Lanford and myself. So if those were all the same as outlined, in my opinion, yes. If Mark, if there's anything specific you think I did not address. But that was the intent, that these two plans covered each of those items.
Okay, well, I did a couple of things from Mr. Healy's list. It didn't have to do with trees, though. They had to do a lot with lighting and things like that.
Yeah, I did not, let me mention two things that were probably on there, sorry to cut you off, sir. No parking along the entrance drive, that is on the dimension plan and that's marked as such. And as well as minimal lights along that entire entrance drive.
Okay, and did you, um, is the site lighting revised to comply with the 15-foot height limitation? And will they be now LED lights?
Yes, the both of that, yes.
Okay, and let's see, where's the next thing I was looking at? Oh, how many parking spaces are there unfinished?
So the we're providing a total of 157 spaces and we're banking 30 of them, so we will be down to 127.
Okay, all right. The sign lighting will be LED and will only be lit when the facility's in use.
Correct.
The proposed parking lot lights will be on a timer in separate circuits, so that they will be lit only when necessary. Further, the parking lot and driveway lights will not be used when the facility is not in use. When not used, but site lighting should be limited to minimal necessary security lights.
Correct, and those notes actually had been on our prior lighting plan, but yes, that's, that is correct.
Okay. We're almost done, Mr. Arndman. Yeah, 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 okay. All you told is the undergrad now?
I, yes, that was always the case.
Okay, all right. Oh, this is a question for Mr. Lanford. The applicant will agree to Title 39 to allow the township enforcement of no parking along the site roadway and other areas outside of the lawn space.
That is correct, and quite frankly, everything that is in that memo that was prepared by Mr. Healy was agreed to by the applicant. Those things are not shown on the plan, but still agreed to, and we have no problem incorporating them into the resolution of approval.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Lanford. You just saved me a half a page going down this list. Thank you. I'm done. Okay, anybody else? All right, I guess at this point we appropriate to open it to any, either of the attorneys for the objectors.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Martina Bailey on behalf of Ray and John Snyder. And I was going to ask if we would be permitted to make some closing statements, if now is the appropriate time. And I think Ms. Knerek, who's representing the other objector, may also have been planning that, but it affords pleasure that we make those comments at this point.
Oh. You've seen some testimony from a witness, so I was giving you an opportunity, if you had any questions for the witness.
Oh, right.
You would get an opportunity to make a closing afterwards. I believe, Mr. Reagan, that this is going to have to be open to the public again also, is that correct?
And that would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, so right now we're including a hearing, the standard procedure. If you have questions, now's your time and you'll be back hopefully later for a statement.
I can't really hear you.
Thank you. I just, I did have a couple of follow-up questions. Good evening, Mr. Arndman. And again, I'm Martina Bailey on behalf of Ray and John Snyder. You'd mentioned that the buffer along what I think is, is the north eastern property line, which borders the Snyder's farm here. That dark hedgerow, you described that as a hedge row, is that correct?
So what we're planning to put there is basically a solid evergreen trees in there, fir trees, and to be mixed in with some native dogwoods as well.
Oh, right, right, okay. So those would count towards the, the tree, the trees being replaced?
Correct, the, the evergreens that we're specing at a size that would comply with that, yes.
And do you know how many trees are being removed?
On the whole site, on the original application, we owed, I think, 429 replacement trees. And we only had, that, that wasn't being removed, that, that included their different sizes and the relative requirement for two-to-one or three-to-one replacement. So it was 492 or approximately the same. Once we finish the final approval plan, we'll have that exact. But we were replacing just 107 before. We've added another 135 replacement trees with the plan I'm presenting tonight.
So you said 174 and 135 replacements?
107 originally, we're adding 135.
Just doing the math here.
242.
242, okay, because your, your plan actually says 238, I think, in total.
And we'll, we'll check the number if there was a discrepancy.
Right, and, and is the reason for that number being what it is because you, you simply can't fit more trees on the site? Because there is that, that sort of open field area, which is where the driveway now goes. It's hard to tell, but how, how many trees are there in that open space? Is there some reason why you can't plant more trees in that area?
There was a desire from many of the board members that we heard to keep the view shed that's a part of the scenic corridor here. So that was the balance that we, we did between adding trees and, and screening Snyder property.
And just, just sticking with the trees, that, that portion of the, the boundary that is And just just sticking with the trees, that that portion of the the boundary that is in the corner there, again, bordering with the Snyder farm. That this is where this is the boundary going from, I guess it's from south to north. It doesn't appear that there are any trees along that boundary. Am I right about that? It says here, the note says native bush and scrub buffer.
Yeah, that was a between their plantings and and the open field, so we just kept a native, basically, transition between those two areas.
Is there a reason that trees that some trees couldn't be planted there just to increase the buffering from the neighboring property?
We, well, they won't be seeing the house of worship, I guess, and we'd be buffering our our field to open space to his open space. So it didn't seem like a need in that area.
Right, is that something that the the applicant might consider adding?
Again, I think from, we'll let the board members opine on that. Seems to be that there was a idea to keep the view all the way to the farm through there, so I I think this plan works well as it is.
Right, I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, any other, I believe there was an attorney.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jennifer Knerek from Price Meach, Sherman, Indiana, on behalf of the Warwick's D. Jordan Property Owners. Good evening, Mr. Arndt, and I just have one quick point of clarification on on your testimony. You referenced the bank parking along the parking area. Total number of bank parking that you, the applicant intends to bank is how many?
Thirty.
And can you, just with your pointer, just scroll over those, that first row would be thirty spaces, correct?
Fifteen here, and then the island, and then the next fifteen, for a total of thirty.
Okay, thank you very much. I have nothing further.
Okay, if there's nothing further there, I guess it would be appropriate then, Mark, we open to the public for questions concerning the testimony that they have just heard.
Okay, again, so to the to the public, similar to what just occurred with the board and the attorneys, we're now asking Mr. Arndt questions of the testimony he just gave. I do see one, at least one person with their hand up, just to remind the public, because I think some people came in late. If they're on WebEx, they can use the raised hand function. Going to the participants icon in the lower right-hand corner of the screen. A new participants window will open on the right-hand side of your screen. In the right, lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on that hand icon, that's if you're on WebEx. If you're calling in, you can press star three. So I see Leah Convery. You are unmuted.
Hi, Leah Convery, forty-three towns in Franklin Park, New Jersey. Has there been an instruction schedule put together, estimated time of construction?
I don't have a final one from the applicant, I know they've been anxious, as Mr. Lanford said, we've been at it for a while, but I don't have a current schedule. If I may, hopefully, the applicant, if this matter is approved, hopefully, construction will commence in the spring and be completed in less than a year.
Okay, and is that, have they taken into account the increase in building material cost? That, I work with architects all the time, and I've just had projects asking to to value engineer a a great amount for because of building material costs.
Well, so, first of all, that's not an issue before this board, but, you know, the applicant is aware of what's going on.
It's going to affect the the construction schedule, because if it's like anything like the buildings that are being put up in other part, the other part of town.
Okay, I'm going, I'm, excuse me, I'm going to interrupt now. This session is for questions concerning the witnesses' testimony. If you want to make a statement concerning a construction schedule, you'll have an opportunity probably later tonight, when the public comments section, when you can say anything you want.
This is a question, this is this is a question about.
Concerning his testimony. Information that was testified to.
Okay, the construction schedule was my question, thank you, nothing further.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have, I believe we have another hand. I think the hand went down. So Mr. I do have, okay, last name is Khan. Okay, you're unmuted.
Good evening, first meeting in the township since I moved here, so trying to understand the.
Write your first name and spell your last name, please.
Oh, I guess you don't, it's Moine Khan, last name is K H E N, from Market Drive, it's off from South Middle Bush. My question, I don't know if it's you following protocols, I have a question about traffic patterns for South Middle Bush.
The questions here are for the plan that you see on the screen concerning the testimony from the engineer. If you have traffic comments, they can come during the general comment period. Traffic has thoroughly dealt with several different times.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm scrolling the list here, going to remind the public, this is questions of Mr. Arndt regarding his testimony that he gave tonight. As the chairman said, there have been many, many meetings over several months. And traffic, for example, there was at least one meeting, if not two, where the public were given up, was given an opportunity to ask questions of the traffic testimony that was provided. And I'm not seeing any other hands, Mr. Chairman.
We'll just hesitate for a moment if there's a last minute change of heart. If not, then we'll close to the public, and I guess at this point, it would be appropriate for closings.
Frank, do the opposing attorneys go first? Who goes, who goes first?
I I guess it could be up to the board, I don't know that it really matters who who goes, I I guess it, I guess we could let the the objector attorneys make their closing statements, and then have the applicant, you know, sum up their case.
Open to the public first, for the public comment before we get to that?
Also, I I would like to know, I would like to ask a few more questions that didn't really relate to to Mr. Arndt's testimony, but there were issues that were brought up along the, did you say there was really eleven meetings, Peter?
This is the eleventh.
Oh, man, so, so I, I had some notes, and I wanted to make sure that whatever whatever resolution we we drafted either included these concepts or didn't, but they should be they should be at least considered. May I go ahead with that?
Sure, actually, I think, Mr. Shepherd, I think Mr. Healy at the last meeting read the letter with all of the terms and conditions into the record. And again, I'd be happy to, if you have any specific questions on any of those terms and conditions, I'd be happy to expound them.
Things, one of the things we talked about early on was that there was certain hours and days that the house of worship would be open, it was Friday, six to ten, Saturday, nine to nine, and Sunday, nine to nine. I I think that should be in the resolution that the the times are going to be limited that way. Another one is that we talked about the spiritual leader occupying the house on the property when he's in the country. And I just want to make sure that no one else takes up residence there, and that was discussed as well. I I was disappointed about the decision about no left-hand turn lane, but it's already, that's water under the bridge. And then there should be something in the something in the resolution about no parking anywhere but in the parking lot. But I think that that's not necessarily one for discussion. Is your client comfortable with those things, Mr. Mr. Lanford?
Yeah, and and just to clarify, because I think it is actually more restrictive what we testify to. We only are going to be using the facility on two Fridays during the year. Other than that, we will not be using the facility on any weekday, day or night. So there's only two Fridays during the year, and you are correct, the hours on the Saturdays and Sundays will vary, but they will, the worst-case scenario is nine AM to nine PM. Some days it'll open a little bit later and close a little bit earlier, but the the hours will be from nine AM to nine PM. So that's what was testified to, I believe that was also in the memorandum prepared by Mr. Healy. And we did agree to that, and also the other statements that you made, we did agree to.
Okay, so I would suggest that we open it to the public. Then we have the attorneys do their closing statements, and then obviously, the board will have to deliberate. And if you wish to, obviously, you can use the report that I put together, which again, wasn't anything new, it was a summary of my notes of all the different changes and agreements that had been agreed to over the course of the ten prior meetings. But I think it may help to go over those during your deliberation. So then, again, you'll be reminded prior to a vote of kind of what's been put out there, and what what is the current state of of the application before you.
If there's nothing else, I think we should hear from the attorneys.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what Mr. Healy suggested is probably the right approach, is to open it to the public for their comments, and then give the objector attorneys the opportunity for their closing statements, and then, Mr. Lanford, before you begin any deliberations.
Okay, open to the public first, then you're saying, that's fine to open to the public.
Okay, so again, this is the time when the public's going to be permitted to provide their statements to the board. We'd ask you to give your name, spell your last name, and then prior to providing your statement, the board attorney will swear you in. Again, use the raised hand function if if on WebEx, press star three if you're calling in. After you're done with your statement, I would ask that you use the lower hand function if you're on WebEx, and press star three again if you're calling in, that will lower your hand. That way, I have a current tally of who is waiting to speak. So please ask that you do that as a courtesy to your, to the other members of the public.
One additional, one additional thing, Mark, if you would remind the public, if they have representation by an attorney, it's not appropriate to speak.
Yeah, that would be correct, Mr. Chairman, obviously, anyone who is represented by an attorney, and there are two, and I believe they put on the record who they're representing, but those folks should not be making any public comment, since there it's being done on behalf of them by their attorney.
Okay, we're ready, let's.
Okay, so going in order here, I have Barbara Lawrence. You are unmuted.
Hello, my, thank you.
If you can just raise, if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
And if you could provide your name for the record.
Barbara Lawrence, I'm a forty-one-year resident of at thirty-three eighty-three South Middle Bush Road. I'm a former member of the township's Historic Preservation Commission, and earned a certificate in historic preservation at Drew University, and worked on preserving and the preserve and the plan for use of the Stuthoff Gunther Farmstead on South Middle Bush Road. I'm going to take a quick sort of a step back and talk about this, the approval of this plan in the context of the overall township plans. While the there have been many details all these months gone through and questions asked about this plan. I I think that the real issue for me is the need to follow the township plan has a main goal of keeping rural areas rural. And I think that building this structure, even with all of the many accommodations that have been made, will interfere with what have been in several, not only the master plan, but the underlying more specific plans. This is, as we've noted, it's a township-designated scenic corridor, we want to retain that. The Historic Preservation Master Plan notes that the historic character of the township is rooted in its agrarian ancestry and its concentration of Dutch farmsteads, of which there are several on South Middle Bush Road, on the scenic byway. And the historic preservation plan goals include preserving and retaining a harmonious setting for historic and agriculturally significant building structures and places within the township. The Farmland Preservation Master Plan component of the township's plan has an objective to focus on preservation of prime agricultural lands. The Open Space and Recreation Master Plan outlines a number of land preservation areas and notes that these land preservation areas overlap the historic districts in the township, and focuses on preserving areas of scenic or historic value. In addition to township plans, the County Agriculture Development Plan states that the county wants to ensure the long-term viability of agriculture in Somerset County. So when you take all of this together, that theme of keeping rural areas rural is to my mind, an overriding thing. And I know, well, the applicant here has done what everything they could, been responsive to all of the requests, and tried to mitigate any change in in the environment. It still is taking away potentially either open space or agricultural land. So I I think that we have to look at, does the panel approve every application just because it meets all the requirements or all the requests for change? Or do they have to think about where it fits in the context of the whole town? I I remember reading that recently that impervious coverage in the township had increased thirty percent since two thousand and fifteen. So once again, these parking lots may not, and building may not be a large area, but we are once again changing the character of Franklin Township and reducing the amount of open and agricultural land. So in the end, I know that South Middle Bush Road won't be like it was when we moved here over forty years ago, when I could walk down the road safely, because it was about two minutes between cars. I do support preservation of Franklin scenic byways, historic districts, and agricultural heritage. I do not support approving variances that will violate the goals of the township's well-researched and well-thought-out plans. And I do not support the development of this intrusion into the township's historic cultural agricultural resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Barbara Tenbrook.
Hi, good evening, Mark and zoning board. My name is Barbara Tenbrook, I've lived in Franklin for fifty-five years. I am an activist protecting Franklin Township.
And you need to be sworn in.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead. Is somebody going to?
Man? If if you raise your right hand, do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Of course, I do.
Thank you.
Well, I too have been a commissioner of Franklin Township Historic Preservation Commissioner for ten years formally. And I am active on the Millstone Valley Preservation Coalition of Trustees and the Meadows Foundation Board of Trustees. and the Meadows Foundation Board of Trustees. We have written a resolution. I I do oppose this application personally. And the Meadows Foundation has written a resolution also opposing the.
I would object a resolution from an agency without resolutions are not generally admitted before the board. Obviously, Ms. Tenbrook can render her opinion, but I I don't think a resolution or a petition is admissible before this board.
I presented this, I sent this resolution into Christine's Woodbury's office on February eighth.
No, again, Ms. Tenbrook, it can't, it can't be submitted as part of the record. So really, this is your your comments as an individual. You you can't be making comments on behalf of an organization.
The Meadows Foundation?
Yeah, this this has to be your personal.
All right.
Comment on the application as opposed to on behalf of the organization.
Yes, on the Meadows Foundation is the steward of three historic properties on South Middle Bush Road. The first property is the Hegeman House, Barnes circa eighteen sixty-one and eighteen seventy-six at two oh nine South Middle Bush Road. The Wykoff Garrettson House and Museum circa seventeen thirty and eighteen oh five, two fifteen, South Middle Bush Road. And the Van Lussa Dam House circa eighteen seventy-five at two eighty, South Middle Bush Road. This application is on a scenic byway, Franklin Township Scenic Byway and the historic corridor for the Millstone Valley Preservation Coalition, the National Scenic Byway. We are opposed to this construction. It steals open space. It steals the agricultural landscape. And it's an intrusion on the preserved historic properties on South Middle Bush Road. That's all I'm going to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a caller with a nine oh eight three oh five, start to their number. Go ahead, you're unmuted. Please provide your name, spell your last name, your address, and then the board attorney will swear you in.
Yes, Jim Johnston, Johnston, J O H N S T O N at thirty-four thirty-four Norwich Place in Somerset.
Mr. Johnson, can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I know you said the petitions are inadmissible. But just so you know, I am the one who has been submitting to you our petition, preserve South Middle Bush Scenic Corridor. We now have two thousand. Oh, oh, okay. But but just just so you know who I am, we now have two thousand five hundred and thirty-five signatures. All right, now, as an individual, I I agree with the previous callers. We have to maintain the the agrarian environment that Franklin has always had. And my my concerns are both environmental and and agricultural, especially with recent news developments. There has been a a disruption in the global supply supply chain. And and as you probably been reading in the news, you know, there's been a a empty, empty grocery shelves. There's been labor, labor shortages. There's cargo ships off the coast that can't unload their cargo. And there's a there are shortages of truck drivers. The price of gas is going way up. I think I I heard yesterday in California, the price of gas is now in some parts of California. It's now up to eight dollars a gallon. And the price, the price of food is going up too. And that's what I'm most concerned about. We we have to preserve our local food supply. And in in case, in case there's, you know, in in case, I guess, to the point where where the where we 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 need to have a source of a local source of food. And so that that's that that's that's what I'm concerned about. And so, so, so I I think we need to 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 preserve the agricultural zone along South Middle Bush Road. And 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 for for any for any contingencies. And and, you know, more and more people are now using, are now becoming food insecure. The the food bank, the the more people have to use the food bank. And, you know, so we we can't always depend on on having an outside source of food. We have to, we have to, you know, preserve the our local agricultural agriculture, you know, in and so we can maintain, so we can make sure we have a local, a local food supply. So that that's my main concern. And okay, so 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 I think that's the main point I want to get across. And thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Leah Convery. Okay, you're unmuted.
Again, this is Leah Convery, C O N V E R Y, forty-three Townsend Court, Franklin Park.
Ms. Convery, can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my my concerns are similar to the the previous speakers. In addition to that, the the traffic issues. I've been driving up and down South Middle Bush Road for since I could drive over thirty twenty-five years ago. I I grew up around Cedar Grove Road and New Brunswick Road on a farm. My grandparents drew corn and soybeans. And so the 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 previous caller, Jim, his his point of locally sourced food is is an issue that's also concerning. The the traffic adding adding to this, going past this this particular parcel is is an issue. And deer are an issue. We've had many council discussions, the town council discussions about the deer population. And this is going to affect that negatively as well. Coming from a construction background, I'm an architectural hardware consultant with my accreditation through the Dorr and Hardware Institute. I work with architects. I prepare their construction documents in regards to doors, hardware, safety and security. And so I know construction cycles. And I know about value engineering in in building materials at currently. Jim's point previously as well with the supply chain issues. I I have concerns about funding for this project. And as as Mr. Lanfrat's previous statement earlier in this hearing, he he has a client who can't come up with enough money to to pay, finish building their their project. I have a concern that this is going to happen, happen as well with this project. I would, I would request that full funding be secured before this begins. Because once you cut into this piece of land, it's, if it gets abandoned, there's going to be a problem. And we've, we've seen this in town at the the property sitting next to the TC sub on Route twenty-seven that has been sitting as a complete and total eyesore for, it's got to be over a year now with with an open building with now, I guess, the Tyvek's is on the outside of the building. And that is, it's a scenic roadway. And we don't want to see that in its half-baked. And and I say, I can see you, sir, Mr. Lanfrat, I can see you. By the way, you have your video still on, so. No one wants to see an eyesore. And if this construction project gets abandoned in the middle of it because they lose funding or they run out of money, because I am fully and wholly aware of of the price of construction material right now. There there's no making it go back to the way it was. So if you're going to pull the trigger on this on this project, make sure it it goes all the way through. So that's a big, big concern. I've been asked recently to to try to value engineer over fifteen percent of a building cost. I've I've been on teams where millions of dollars are being just sliced off of buildings and nothing is changing. It's there, nothing is changing. It's it's just because the cost of of actual construction equipment. So the these are my concerns. I I know a number of residents in the in the town have similar concerns. Not enough of us have enough, have the time or energy to come and speak, speak to you during these meetings. So as Jim said, yeah, he he knows over two thousand people who object to this. Talking for them. I'm that, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Michael Bell. I'm going to mute you again, provide your your name, spell your last name, provide your address and wait for the board attorney to swear you in. Go ahead, Mr. Bell.
My name is Michael Bell, surname B E L L. I live at seventy Copper Mine Road in Franklin Township.
Mr. Bell, can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I am a member of the Board of Trustees of the Millstone Valley Preservation Coalition. This is a non, a regional nonprofit organization which seeks to preserve and enhance the historical, cultural, recreational, scenic and open space assets of the Millstone Valley. The Millstone Valley Preservation Coalition is also the local organization of record for the Millstone Valley National Scenic Byway. I also speak as a thirty-five-year resident of Franklin Township. Now, I point out that at a meeting on January the third of this year, the Board of the Millstone Valley Preservation Coalition approved a resolution to transmission to the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment concerning this particular application by the Dada Bagwan Vignan Institute. That resolution was transmitted by email to the secretary.
Jack again.
Yeah, Mr. Bell, again, it's it's the this is public comment from individuals. You can't be making representations on part of organizations that are not present.
I have sat through eleven meetings. This is the eleventh meeting, as Mr. Lanfrat pointed out. And I have sat through all of these. I have asked Mr. Healy, when would be the appropriate time to present this? And I was told that it would be during the public comment period and that someone would have to be present from the organization in order for this to be presented. Now I'm being challenged by Mr. Lanfrat, who has challenged many other witnesses I know. But where would be the opportunity for us to present this resolution to the board?
It's it's not appropriate to be presenting any kind of resolutions to the board.
What recourse does the board have to oppose this application? I can make personal statements, but I think it's fair that an organization with that remit should be able to present a a resolution to the board.
And I, well, it's not permitted by the municipal land use law. I apologize for that. And there are avenues in the event that the board was to take action on this application where your organization can 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 challenge an approval if if that's what happens. And that's the appropriate step for someone to take who may not support an application. So I apologize. So you'll have to speak as an individual.
In that case, I will present this as individual statement.
And let and let me clarify as well. In response to questions of when when people would be able to speak, I said it would be at the end of the hearing. I never indicated you'd be able to present the resolution, just to be clear. I never said that. This question comes up at hearings all the time, and it's the same answer I give everybody when asked that question.
Well, I feel I was somewhat misled at the time by what was told. But that that's water under the bridge now. I'll present these as as comments here. The proposed project on South Middle Bush Road is within the designated scenic corridor of the Millstone Valley National Scenic Byway. So we have some interesting. The proposed project on South Middle Bush Road is within the designated Franklin Township Scenic Corridor of South Middle Bush Road. And the scenic attributes of this neighborhood benefit all of Franklin Township and many other residents in central New Jersey. Franklin Township's master plan states that improvements along its scenic corridors are to be limited five thousand square feet. But this proposed building and its associated parking lot are really on an industrial scale, over twenty thousand square feet. That's comparable in size and environmental impact to a small retail shopping center. The construction and use of this facility will be a detriment to one of the last vestiges of the rural history and heritage of Franklin Township, including the adjacent Snyder Farm. The Somerset County Circulation Plan update from two thousand and eleven states that local zoning and development guidelines can be used to ensure opportunities for new development are compatible with a scenic corridor's character and to preserve existing open space. The safety of the neighborhood will be compromised through the additional traffic associated with routine and particularly with the exceptional use of this facility. The traffic study submitted by the applicants, which concluded there would be no significant impact on traffic flow and safety on South Middle Bush Road, was based on a peak occupancy of only two hundred and fifty, although the building is rated for a maximum occupancy of four fifty. And conditional use variances and final major site plan variances are required in order to approve construction. My personal comments are that South Middle Bush Road from Clermont Road north to the village of Middle Bush represents one of the last vestiges of the rural history and heritage of Franklin Township. The farm adjacent to this site, Snyder Farm, is one of the remaining active farms in this area. These attributes of this neighborhood have been recognized by the Franklin Township and designated as a scenic corridor. As noted in the Township Historic Preservation Department of nineteen, the scenic corridor ordinance regulates development within one thousand feet of the township designated scenic corridor. Among the items regulated are building setback, new road bylay, fences, signs, curbs and stormwater control. Many of the township's infantry historic resources are located along the township-designated scenic corridors. And many of these roads run through one or more of the historic districts within the township. Now, township cannot and should not entirely halt development. And the encroachment of suburban and industrial development is unique. And we, as a community, must carefully weigh the implications of approving such a major facility as proposed here. Master plan includes the following goals: keeping rural areas, which contain a large number of the township's historic structures as well, rural, preserving areas of scenic and or historic value. The farmland preservation plan aims to preserve the historically rural and agricultural setting within which many of the township's historic historic sites reside. Other farm fields further north and west in our township are fast being covered with industrial developments and high-density housing. These transitions are irreversible. And once the first development on this scale is approved in this particular neighborhood, others will soon follow, each citing precedent. An even larger religious facility, almost twenty-nine thousand square feet, is already proposed for another site on South Middle Bush Road, about a half mile north of this one. I urge the board to consider the combined impacts of those two facilities on the area when considering this first application. Agricultural zoning of sites, of the sites of this facility, does permit houses of worship. But this proposed building is on an industrial scale, as I said. On the plans presented, compare the size of the existing house on the site with the size of the proposed facility and its associated parking lots. Despite Mr. Lanfrat's earlier objection to describing the building as large, I noticed that his expert witness, Mr. Ogden, speaking for the proponents at a previous hearing, said in response to a question from a member of the public about the height of the building, it is meant to be on a grand scale. I would point out that some small. I would point out that some small strip malls, which would be prohibited in this zone, are smaller than either this or the other proposed facility. These religious facilities are being proposed for this area precisely because the zoning restricts commercial or higher-density housing development, making the land relatively inexpensive to acquire and in the expectation that these religious facilities can circumvent the zoning regulations. It should be noted that the Township Historic Plan aims, among other things, to protect the township's historic resources from incompatible design and or land uses and to manage change by discouraging alteration or new construction not in keeping with historic sites and historic districts and avoiding the unnecessary demolition of historic resources. The Board should consider why this facility is sized for a possible occupancy of more than four hundred and fifty when the applicant's traffic study, I cite the Dolan Study, is based on a peak usage of only two hundred and fifty and that on festival days. At a previous hearing for this proposal, a representative of the sect, Mr. Patel, stated in his testimony that this building will serve as the primary center of this religion for the whole United States. He said that it will be the first such facility owned by the sect in the U.S. So it will clearly serve as a flagship for this community. Presumably, if you build it, they will eventually come. Particularly if, as planned, a leader of the sect from India is in residence in the adjoining house. This will render the occupancy estimates and the traffic study inadequate and probably invalid. In earlier sessions of this hearing, the attorney for the applicant brought up the possibility of expanding the parking lot to accommodate additional attendance at the facility. We should all note that at the September twenty twenty, that's over a year ago, meeting at which this applicant application was first introduced, consideration of this proposal was delayed because of the extended discussion which occurred of an application by another religious institution further north in the township for a variance related to celebrations there. Several township residents living adjacent to that facility objected strenuously to granting that variance because of the impact of previous celebrations at that facility on them and their properties. These potential impacts of a large facility demand careful consideration. I won't go into the zoning officer, our senior zoning officer, Mark Healy's analysis here. But he at one point he does say here, since South Middle Bush Road is on the county jurisdiction, this application is not subject to the five thousand square foot limitation. I think quite frankly, that's sophistique. But because particularly the Somerset County Circulation Plan says local zoning and development guidelines can be used to ensure opportunities for new development are compatible with a scenic corridor's character. And that's applies to the county's scenic corridors and to preserve existing open space at a byways ribbon of green. I'd also note that the site is located within the six-mile run state and national register historic district. Despite the fact that the uh Mark Healy has said that the township's historic district, it's not within a township historic district. It is within historic districts and it should be subject to review by the county. I will just close now by urging the Board to consider the totality of variances to the zoning regulations and the accommodations required for this religious facility and their proposed second one, soon to be heard by the Board, and the impact of approving either on the neighborhood, the scenic corridor and the township as a whole. A question to consider is whether either of these massive facilities will deliver another blow, possibly mortal, to the continuation of active farming in Franklin Township. We've heard from the applicant's attorney about minor accommodations to the plan to meet a few objections of the surrounding properties. But frankly, these accommodations are like trimming the toenails on the elephant in the room. This facility as now planned still exceeds by a factor greater than four the size limitation uh limitation for religious structures. And it will still violate the signage and parking requirements. Notwithstanding the limited analysis presented in the traffic study submitted by the applicants, it will create significant pulsatile traffic flow and uh and back into South Middle Bush Road as discussed in the alternative traffic studies. Granting these variances and allowing this large structure to be built would adversely affect this designated scenic corridor and degrade the tranquility and safety of the neighborhood through the additional traffic. What is land use zoning in Franklin Township for if not to preserve these benefits to its residents? As an observer of these virtual meetings of the Board for over a year since it was first scheduled, I contrast the reticence of the Board to challenge the applicants and their representatives with a grilling that the Board has given to several applicants with relatively minor variances to be heard. To me, there's an apparent imbalance in treatment, and I hope that the Board will consider this as they consider this application. I do thank the Board for this opportunity to speak about this application. Thank you.
May I ask a few questions before he leaves?
Go ahead.
Bell, what is the name of your organization?
The Millstone Valley Preservation Coalition.
And are you a trustee? Are you the president? What what's your relationship to the organization?
I'm a member of the Board of Trustees.
Is Mr. Snyder a member of that organization?
Mr. Snyder is not. He may be he may be a member of the organization. He's not a trustee.
Is he a member?
There is no membership.
Has Mr. Snyder appeared before the Board of Trustees? We discussed this matter with the Board of Trustees.
He has not.
Ms. I would object to this line of questioning. I have no idea how this could be possibly be relevant. Mr. Snyder's membership in organizations is his business, and it's frankly irrelevant to the comments from Mr. Bell.
He he referenced the impact of this facility on the Snyder Farm, and I think it's relevant to question his knowledge of the Snyder Farm, the workings of the Snyder Farm, and as to affect his credibility.
I am I do not know Mr. Snyder. I have never met Mr. Snyder. I am aware of Mr. Snyder through his farm and through the fact that I, when I drive past that, I see that there are items, agricultural items for sale. That is the full depth of my knowledge, other than what I have learned through sitting through these interviews.
Are are you aware that Mr. Snyder applied for a variance for a cell tower on his property?
I'm gonna object to this.
I'm gonna step in here because I think we're getting off target.
Yeah. Mr. Lanford, and move on from that. That's not relevant, quite frankly, to his comments.
I will not pursue that issue.
Thank you.
Okay, is this speaker, Mr. Bell, now completed?
I have completed my testimony, yes.
Okay, thank you. When we get to the next speakers, Mark, let's issue a reminder that we have often done in the past. It would be helpful if the next group of speakers uh don't rehash the same information. A good purpose of one, aside from the fact that you get to speak and tell us what you think, it's also your opportunity to bring out information to the Board that could help us make a decision. Uh, it doesn't do any good for fifteen or twenty people uh to get up and say the same thing over and over again. So future speakers, let's please look for some different additional relevant information.
Mr. Chairman, we have Babu Viregoda. You are unmuted. Please provide your name, spell your last name, your address, and wait for the board attorney to swear you in. Please go ahead.
Yes, uh, my first name is Babu, B A B U. My last name, Viregoda, V E E R E G O W D A. And my address is thirty-three West Kincaid Drive, West Windsor, New Jersey.
Can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so I heard quite a bit from previous speaker that this corridor is a scenic in a corridor. And thank you very much for everybody reminding the Board and themselves again and again. Uh, I really applaud both the Board members and the applicant, especially the professionals from both the applicant side and also from the township side to make sure that the studies were conducted as per the the rules and the regulation and the guidelines. And I read the traffic report, and the traffic report is very thorough. They looked at the the peak of the peak. Okay, and this is something that um they they did a, you know, great job as a traffic consultant. And they came up with what those, you know, the impacts are, the medications measures are, and there is no significant, you know, impact. And the reason why I applaud the applicant, they really bent backward to maintain all the rules and regulations, whether it's a star water management, whether it's uh the green tree they maintained in terms of the clipper size of the tree, the whole main yard. And um just to make sure that the scenic corridor and the specifications has been, you know, maintained and and preserved. So this uh project does it does not bring any adverse, you know, impact either environmentally or to deserve the purpose of the scenic corridor. I fully support this project, and Board should really, you know, be proud to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
But that would appear to be a Ms. Tenbrook spoke previously. I think her hands just remained up since the since uh when she spoke previously. I do not see anybody else raising their hand. Anybody new raising their hand?
Okay, nobody raising?
No.
All right, then we'll close to the public. Let's go to the closings for the objectors' attorneys.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jennifer Knerek from Pricemy Showman Intermedia on behalf of the Warwick's New Joining Property Owners. You heard rebuttal testimony from three witnesses on our end, a traffic engineer, an environmental consultant and a planner. With respect to traffic, it is our contention that the Board should seriously consider the effects and impact that this proposed development will have with potentially increased traffic on a two-lane roadway with no shoulders that serves as a regional urban minor arterial roadway. There is also the potential of safety issues at the driveway intersection the Board should consider. With respect to environmental concerns, the Board should be cognizant of the impact that this proposed project will have with the removal of a significant number of trees to accommodate this use on this site that is along a scenic corridor. Considering the environmental constraints on the property, the Board should also ensure that the applicant complies with all local, county and state requirements. With regard to planning proofs, it is also our contention that this is not an appropriate location for this use because of the location in the scenic corridor and its impact on the scenic corridor due to the size and the architectural style of the proposed building, which would have visual as well as aesthetic impacts on the character of the area of the scenic corridor. If the Board is to accept the applicant's testimony that the number of attendees would be limited from the total number of parking spaces is not required, then the applicant should be willing to build a smaller building that matches the needs of the attendees and complies with the parking requirement. Based on the number of proposed attendings, it is our contention that the building is two-thirds larger than it needs to be. Further, considering that this is merely a one-story building, why does the height of the building have to be thirty-five feet? Why can't it be twenty-five feet or less? What is the driving need? From an estate point standpoint, seeing that the proposed use is within the scenic corridor, why can't they do more of an attempt made by the applicant to make the architecture of the building more compatible with the established character of the surrounding area? Finally, I would submit to the Board that if the Board is inclined to grant preliminary approval this evening that the applicant be required to comply with all the comments and conditions outlined in the Board Planner's Report dated August tenth as it relates to the site plan revisions, as well as the restrictions on the use and occupancy of the site and building. And each of those, the item I was given in the resolution that that will be drafted, along with any additional conditions deemed appropriate by the Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Thank you again, Martina Bailey, on behalf of Ray and John Snyder. Um, thank you for the opportunity. We've been here from the beginning, as you know. We appreciate that the applicant has made changes and accommodated some of the requests, but we don't think that they've gone far enough in our requests. And my clients fundamentally oppose this application. And to be clear, they don't they they don't oppose the intended use. They respect and they worship freedom of religion. They oppose this application because it simply is non-conforming and it it's requiring variances that deviate substantially and unjustifiably from the zoning ordinance and from the scenic corridor criteria. And we don't think that there is a basis for that. Just to iterate, it's a thirty-five percent variance from the rear yard setback on a lot that could accommodate the use. There's plenty of space without such a variance. There's a sixty-six percent variance from the number of parking spaces from the township's code, and that may be even greater now with the banked spaces. For a house of worship that proposes over six thousand square feet, there's a significant number of trees that are being cut down and not being replaced. We don't know what that number is, although it's been asked of the applicant. And they still can't tell us that. And significantly violates the scenic corridor criteria in many ways with the construction of a thirty-five-foot-high flat top mass of a building with with what previously was was offered as a white facade. We appreciate that the applicant is willing to make the facade beige. I would ask, in addition to the conditions already iterated in the August tenth memo, that the condition with respect to the facade also extend that the beige tones be required for the facade in addition to the three other other facades of the building, which is what Mr. Lanford indicated he was willing to do. And finally, there's a real a real concern about the environmental impact, which is irreversible once this construction gets done. We had asked for additional things, namely a reduction in the height and in 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 the size of the the building, which, as Ms. Knerek pointed out, is far in excess of of the stated use. That is what it is. But I submit that this Board has discretion to consider and to require of the applicant that the structure be made smaller in in accordance with the scenic corridor criteria. And I would point out the irony that it is the scenic corridor criteria that has driven large, to a very large extent, the location and the design of of this of this development. As Mr. Lanford pointed out, initially, that was going to be in the front of the lot, and it would have been a conforming application. And to be clear, we wouldn't be here if this were a conforming application. We're here because of the variance requests. We understand that it's a that what's proposed here is a permitted conditional use, but as this Board well knows, that means it's a use as long as the conditions are met. And and it's been our position all along that those conditions simply aren't met and that the deviations are are just too substantial to be supported by any criteria and the proofs that would be required to be met. Now, there was a lot of discussion about the house of worship and that it's an inherently beneficial use. We're not challenging either of those things. We do disagree, but I don't disagree. Rather, I don't believe that that gives a house of worship or an inherently beneficial use a free pass in terms of the positive criteria. The Board has to consider the degree of deviations and whether this site is still suitable, notwithstanding those deviations. There was some disagreement among the testimony of the planners as to whether the proofs applied for an inherently beneficial use. It was very technical, but it it's our position that this is because it's a D three variance that the applicant still has to meet the positive criteria and show that the site is suitable. It's the applicant's position, as I understand it, that that's not the case because because of its inherently beneficial status. So I I believe it's incumbent upon this Board to think about that and and be clear in its resolution as to the basis for granting this D three variance. There's been our position that the substantial degree of deviations is really just a sign that proposed construction i- is not suitable for this site. And it doesn't meet either the positive or the negative criteria. Permitting the variances would substantially impair the intent and the purpose of the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance, which is to protect the rural. And aesthetic resources of the scenic corridor. And to discourage large developments that are not in sync, either visually or structurally. With the preservation of the beautiful agricultural resources of this area. So finally. Granting this application would set a, a very dangerous precedent in our view. And it really can't be reconciled with the legislative intent embodied in the conditions of the use and the scenic corridor criteria. So we're urging this board to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lafer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let, let me start uh by talking about facts which everybody. Who has spoken this evening has chosen to ignore. First fact. House of Worship is a permitted use in the zone. The five thousand square foot requirement of the scenic corridor ordinance does not apply to South Middle Bush Road. That is set forth clearly in the township ordinances and therefore. The issue raised at this facility can only be five thousand square feet is totally inaccurate. There were statements tonight that this site is being overdeveloped. The zone requirement for a house of worship in the A zone is twelve acres. This site is just shy of sixteen acres. The zone allowance for building coverage. Is ten percent of the site. Our building is three point six eight percent of the site. The zone requirement for impervious coverage is forty percent. Our impervious coverage is eighteen point six percent. So we are well under the zone requirements for this use. The next fact. When we originally proposed this application. We showed the building closer to South Middle Bush Road with the parking behind it. And that was in conformance with the ordinance. We would not have required any setback variances. With that proposal. Because your staff felt that the scenic corridor is an important consideration, and we don't dispute that. They asked us to move the building further back to protect and preserve the scenic corridor. We were not legally obligated to do that. We were not required to do that. But as an accommodation and because the request was reasonable, we decided to move the building to where it is currently located. That in effect helped preserve the scenic corridor. Now it appears that the objectors want to penalize the applicant for wanting to protect the scenic corridor. They talk out of both sides of their mouth. Ms. Bailey says, well, you're hurting the cider farm because you're violating the, the, the rear yard setback. You should put the building in the front. And then in her next statement, she says, this hurts the scenic corridor. You can't have it both ways. Ms. Bailey says, well, we don't meet the parking requirement. But I indicated we can meet the parking requirement, but the problem is if we put more parking, it affects the scenic corridor. The, the bottom line is. To argue that the variances that we are seeking, which are the bulk variances of the conditional use standards are substantial. Is in fact ludicrous. First of all. A D three conditional use. If we need a variance, the standard is that the applicant will show that the site will accommodate the problems associated with the use. Even though the proposed does not comply with the conditions the ordinances established to address those problems. So what are the variances that we are seeking? One, that we, the parking is not behind the building. That's one of the variances, because your ordinance requires that. Originally, it was behind the building. In essence, we have created that variance as a result of moving the building, but what did we do? We tucked the parking into the wooded areas so it would not be visible from the roadway. The other variance is that we don't have a full buffer surrounding the entire property. Couple of the reasons as were testified to by our planner and by Mr. Ardman. Number one, there are certain wetlands along the buffer of the property which precludes us from putting a buffer around the entire property. Number two, if we were to comply with the township ordinance of putting a buffer around the entire property. We would be removing trees that currently exist along the residential properties, taking them out and planning, putting a fence up and smaller trees. So by keeping the trees in place, we're asking for a variance to protect our neighbors and then our neighbors object that we don't have a buffer. With respect to the number of parking spaces. The testimony is that we have enough and adequate parking. To accommodate the facility and that should be the driving factor. We can put more parking and again, we're well under the impervious coverage requirements. But it's our position that number one, they are not needed. And number two, quite frankly, there is a little bit of a glitch or flaw in your ordinance in interpreting the number of required parking spaces. Which, as the board is very aware. Have resulted in every application coming before this board for a house of worship needing a parking variance. Now. The. Other thing that is troubling and. Ms. Bailey and Ms. Nower Canaric, I'm sorry, Canaric indicated that they presented. Three witnesses to oppose this application. Traffic expert. Who never visited the site on a Saturday when the church was. Would be operating to view the traffic. Who issued a rather lengthy traffic report talking about the weekday traffic on South Middle Bush Road. When the facility is not open during the week except for two Fridays during the year at six P M. They submitted or they presented the testimony of an environmental consultant. Who never visited the site. And who suggested that this applicant should do certain things above and beyond what is required in the township ordinances. And I would respectfully submit that this house of worship must be treated like every other applicant. And should not be required to do anything above and beyond what is required of any applicant in the municipality. And should the board require something of that nature, they run afoul of the Arlupa statute and put the municipality in jeopardy. Lastly, the planner that testified on behalf of the objectors. Talked about the scenic corridor. And acknowledged that the location of the facility where we placed it. Is the best possible location in order to preserve the scenic corridor. Quite frankly. If the board thought that these variances were so critical. And, and, and so important. That they were going to deny the application. The applicant would then turn around and submit an application with the building back in the front of the property. The parking behind it. We would take down every tree along the perimeter of the property and put a fence up. As required by your ordinance. And can eliminate essentially all of the variances. That benefits nobody. Doesn't benefit the town. It doesn't benefit the neighbors. And, and, and it is not what the board should be doing. I think the board has received ample testimony. As to why the, the house of worship is located where it is. And why it is appropriate and based on the exhibit that was presented by Mr. Ardman tonight. It would, it would not even be visible from the roadway and basically the scenic corridor that these. Objectors this evening spoke about would in fact be protected. I would also like to point out. That this property is in an A zone. This property allows single family residential dwellings. That somebody can walk into the township tomorrow. And obtain a building permit to put a single family dwelling. At the front yard setback of the property at whatever size they want, as long as it's under. Ten percent of the building without coming to see you or any other board or any other agency because a single family dwelling is not subject to any zoning approvals. So such as the Ward property is close to South Middle Bush Road, and I know it's been there a long time and, and the house, the Galazuski property next to it has been there a long time. Somebody could put a house right on that site, right along South Middle Bush Road and would destroy the scenic corridor. The other issue that was raised this evening about preserving farmland. This property is an open field. It hasn't been farmed for many years. We are not taking a farmland or a farm. Out of circulation, even though we would have the right to, we own the property. But this is not currently and has not been for a while a working farm. It's, it's merely an open field. So. I want the board to understand that. What we are proposing this evening. Is not as pointed out by the objectors, an overdevelopment of this site. But rather a modest use of this facility to which they are entitled. Because clearly churches are inherently beneficial uses. There are numerous cases and you've heard me argue this before this board on numerous occasions. And the board is aware of that and the board must approve the churches as long as we supply. Where the conditions are not met justification for those conditions and I believe we have. And it is clear that while the scenic corridor is important and I think all of the time and effort that we. We have taken to protect and preserve that scenic corridor. Are, are, are important and we have done that, they do not trump. The ability or the right to construct a house of worship, which is both a permitted use in the zone and an inherently beneficial use. I again indicate to the board that. The board must grant the D three variances. The bulk variances have been justified through the, the. Testimony of all of our witnesses, uh, both Mr. Ardman and Mr. O'Brien, our planner. They were not in any way rebutted by any of the objectors witnesses. And again, I, I don't want to harp on traffic, but again, that was brought up tonight. We submitted an extensive traffic report dealing with the traffic conditions on South Middle Bush Road. When the house of worship would be operating, not on Mondays through Fridays, which is a different animal. We're all aware of that. The traffic report was reviewed, the traffic was, re- report was reviewed by the county as this is a county road and was accepted by the county. And the traffic can be adequately and safely handled. It was concluded both in Ms. Doll's report and her testimony. And also by the county issuing an approval. I thank the board for their time. Uh, I could probably go on for another hour, but I'm sure you don't want to hear me for another hour. I, I. I think we've spent a year going through an application. Which in all honesty is no different than most of the applications that this board has heard over the last twenty years and that I have presented. To this board over the last twenty years for houses of worship. Which were normally done in one or two meetings, but for whatever reason, we're on our eleventh meeting. I think to some degree, the input of the neighbors, the input of some of the uh objectors have made this a better plan. But none of their input, none of those comments give rise to any reason why this application should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board, the rest is up to us. If there's a, the, the appropriate thing would be to have a proper motion and second. And then any discussion after that. Among the board, but first, is there anything any of the board members would like to ask? Or clarify or comment? Okay, I think it's appropriate then that we should construct a. A uh motion and we always do this uh from a positive point of view. And then vote one way or the other, a motion for approval and the only uh thing I would recommend. That basically, the first thing it should include are all thirty two comments on Mark's uh August tenth memorandum. That constitute all the. Conditions, agreements and so on that have been agreed to, I think with the exception of any of the material that we heard this evening. Concerning the site plan.
Okay, well, before we, before we do that, I just have one question. What are we giving them in this? In this resolution, are we giving them uh C variants and the preliminary approval of the site plan or just the C variants?
We, we are asking for the E three use variance to construct the church. The C variances and preliminary site plan approval.
So let me, and if I could, let me summarize what I believe is the, the current state of the, of the variances. And Mr. Lanford, I believe correctly stated them uh in his closing. Off street parking, the, the parking location, meaning it's in front of the building. The rear setback, two hundred feet required, one thirty, one hundred and thirty is now proposed. The buffer to the degree that some of the uh perimeter is wetlands and existing vegetation in those sections. They technically need the buffer variance. So those are the D three and then the only C variants I have is the sign area. If you recall a long time ago, probably very early on, the, the limitation is twenty five square feet. We include the entirety of the structure, the sign structure. And they have uh the actual portion of the sign that conveys the message is twenty two point two. Square feet, so that complies, but the uh structure as a whole again is at sixty seven point five. That's what my notes, if anybody, if either Frank or Mr. Lanford, if you have anything different, I'd ask that you bring that up to the board.
I think that's accurate.
I have nothing different.
Okay, well, I, um, I, I have. Made my way through this whole thing and based upon what I see tonight. I am going to uh propose a uh resolution which includes. The conditional use variance and the C variances and the preliminary uh site plan. Does anyone object to me doing that?
I, I second your motion.
Okay, wait till we get the rest of it.
Right, here we go. I uh, I moved that we grant Da Da Badman Big Don Institute. The D three conditional variance to allow it to build a uh house of worship on a. Property located at six thirty South Middle Bush Road, uh block thirty seven oh two, lot forty six oh three. And the uh C uh variances necessary and uh the. Approve the preliminary approval of the site plan. And that um, that uh grant will be subject to uh the thirty, so be subject to and be. And, and will require the, the adherence to the um. The uh thirty two paragraphs.
the 32 paragraphs in the zoning Director of Planning and Senior Zoning, Mark Healy's memorandum of August 10th, 2021, and the House of Worship shall limit its hours to two Friday nights per year between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, and then Saturday, every Saturday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then Sunday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And that the spiritual leader shall be allowed to stay in the house on the property, but no one else will be permitted to stay there. That the, there shall be no parking anywhere but in the parking lot in the permitted stalls. And that the color of the building be and other blending colors with the exception of the front of the building.
I second the motion.
Okay, are there any discussion points, questions, comments?
Major, sorry, could I clarify the last condition? There was a discussion, and the applicant was willing to make all four sides of the building beige tones. And it was our request that be modified slightly from what's in the memo.
Mr. Shepherd, isn't that what your resolution reflects?
My resolution did not reflect that, but I was unaware. Let's make the resolution, I'll amend the resolution to require the applicant to paint the building, the House of Worship, completely in
Earth tone.
The earth tone colors, yes. Thanks, Mark.
Are second to that?
I second the change.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, let me just bring up two more suggestions. With respect to number two, it says the plan shall incorporate the changes reflected in the exhibit overall plan option A, last revised February 2nd, 21st, prepared by the Reynolds Group. I would suggest that that be amended to say, as further amended and supplemented by the exhibit presented tonight by Mr. Ardman. I forget the exhibit number, but basically, it was that colorized rendering that he provided. So I think that was, again, supplemental to and an update of and more detailed illustration of the plan changes. And with respect to the operation, Mr. Shepherd had mentioned the certain days of the year. There was also another exhibit called the schedule and attendee report. So I would suggest that that also be incorporated specifically as a condition. That's number 26.
I will accept both of those amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
I second changes.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, before we vote, I just want to say one thing to I'd like to thank all the board members for the persistence and dedication to staying with this application. I don't think in my 25 or 30 years, anyone ever, any application ever lasted this long through a lot of difficult conditions, because I don't go with the idea that the virtual hearings are the easiest things to deal with and things like this. And I especially appreciate and thank the newer board members and any other board members who may have missed the meeting that they were able to wade through the tapes and the videos of these meetings in order to have everyone here eligible to vote. Thanks. I know that took a lot of effort, and I appreciate it as the chairman. Now, if there's no other comments, all the votes.
Cheryl Bacia?
Yes.
Richard Propanek?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Against.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Four.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, good luck with it. Have a good evening, board members. If there's no further business, we'll close and adjourn for the evening. Anything? Okay, thank you all. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.